We are, we are, we are just coming into open session. We have some contracts to ratify, so just bear with us a little longer before we switch gears to a new meeting.
So, what's Monday's thinking it will be about? I mean, this is the task force only. Monday, Monica's going to be there.
Yeah, they're good enough to want to be back.
So, if I want to skip them one of these, which one do you want to skip?
I don't know. Um, this lady said, um, this is just going to be what you, this is just listening to people saying, "What's happening? What's happening?"
I know.
And then Monica and then we'll, I have no idea. You know, I'm pretty big with the, I don't know. They just keep saying the same things over and over again that we all know.
Well, I know. That's why I'm...
And then to think that they're going to spend another year and another hundred thousand dollars doing this, it's nuts.
It's not our money.
I understand, but geez, it's a lot of our time.
Okay, so we're back in session, out of executive session, and I will entertain Mark, any motions that you wish to make.
Absolutely. Um, just an update on the negotiating thing. We have six collective bargaining agreements that are up, and we negotiated for the past year. And, um, let's create a motion to ratify tomorrow's negotiation of an MOU, should the agreement come down. I'd like to make a motion to ratify the food services contract from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2000, June 30th, 2020.
Second. I have a motion to second. Any comments, conversation? Seeing none, we'll go majority vote, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Let, make sure Jess can see you. Okay, opposed?
You get to vote, Mr. Young, if you want to.
Absten, abstentions? You good?
I'm good.
Okay, continue.
A motion to ratify, uh, custodial contract, MOU, contract, contract period on July 1st, 2017 through 6/30, 2020, three-year contract.
Right. Comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. Go ahead, Mark.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the office manager's contract, three-year contract, and on, July 1st, 2017 through 6/30, 2020.
Right. Comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Abstentions?
Can we hear the extension?
I'll take it.
I say yes, and?
Yes.
Oh.
All right. Go ahead, Mark.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the parent professional contract, three-year contract, effective 7/1, 2017 through 6/30, 2020.
Comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you.
Make a motion to ratify a three-year contract with the secretarial, uncharted bargaining agreement, effective July 1st, 2017 through 6/30, 2020.
Comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the teachers' contract, effective three-year contract, effective 7/1, 2017 through 6/30.
Comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Abstentions?
Just information for the public, um, you see that you did not get any specific information as to exact COLAs or whatever. Uh, that is because other groups have not yet ratified this contract, and thus technically it is still not a contract between the two groups until such time as, for example, the teachers meet and the paraprofessionals meet to ratify, uh, this contract. Subsequent to that time, all this information will be released to the public.
Mr. Chair, just, uh, in all due respect, I'd like to say thank you to the members of the district committee, the collective bargaining, subway, and the work of the administration, and also the work of the administration, as well as the, uh, representatives of each of the groups, of the food service, the custodial, the office manager, the secretarial, and teachers, and I was calling you all, but, and again, believe, give, give, uh, kudos to one of you, the paraprofessionals. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, people.
And thank you, Mark.
And thank you, Mr. Young, for taking time out of our, know it is a busy schedule this time of year to spend a couple hours with us.
Well... Okay, I think, I believe we're on the fourth element of our, um...
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to apologize early to the task force because we are droning on and a little late, and, um, I'm hoping that in the next 15 to 20 minutes, we can wrap up this other information and, um, give you back the room.
Okay, so this is the report and discussion on the needed repairs at the Ocam Center School. I believe everybody was given a paperwork regarding the report.
Um, yeah, I, I think that, um, the thing that I want to just certainly have everybody try to understand, rumors abound. Information around the, the district is, um, you know, all sorts of, um, conversations about things that aren't true. Uh, few things are true because we are yet to really move forward, um, on this project. Um, and Cheryl has done a lot of work today, working on procurement, because the town of Ocam does not have a procurement officer. We do have procurement officers. We have two licensed procurement officers in the district, and obviously, we're going to help and assist the town of Ocam after some conversations with Mr. Labar, the selectman, and our budget and finance committee members, uh, from Ocam. Um, you know, the, the truth of the matter is, we've had asbestos tile for 46 years, okay, and asbestos-containing mastic in the Ocam Center School. Every three years, we're required by law to have the building inspected by environmental technicians. This particular, um, uh, inspection indicated continued, um, you know, sort of, shall we say, deterioration of the cafeteria area, the kitchen area, and two adjacent, um, hallways that are asbestos-containing. Something that precipitated some more of the problem was we, we have a dishwasher fail, and when the dishwasher failed, there was water in the kitchen, and some of those tiles lifted, and so things looked a little worse than they had in the past, and the inspector said, "You have to remediate this. You have to remove the asbestos-containing materials." And it's very clear in their letter to us which asbestos-containing materials need to be removed, and why they need to be removed, and they ask us to do so expeditiously, and they explain to us why, um, keeping those tiles in place in such, in such poor condition would be a health risk to our students and our faculty and our staff. That being said, um, we have, we, uh, received the official letter on May 30th, and obviously have been busy working on this issue since then. Um, there is no question that there is a procurement process that we must go through. Many people believe erroneously, sadly, because I wish it were true, that the self-selectmen and the budget and finance committee in, um, Ocam could just say, "Okay, let's fix it." And they would go about finding a vendor and fixing it. Well, it's not quite so easy. We have a lot of procurement responsibilities and requirements, and Cheryl is going to walk us through that very quickly to let you know that we have four to six weeks, once these town votes to allocate some money, to appropriate some money, for us to just do paperwork to get to a point where we could get a contractor who would say, "Yes, I can, uh, you know, our company can, can do this project." Um, so Cheryl's going to walk, walk us through what we have to do logistically. Um, we had conversations with ATC, which is our environmental, um, agency that is working with us. ATC basically said to me, "You do have to follow procurement, um, based upon Cheryl's information. She can walk you through the approximate timeframe of, of the procurement process." And as such, we will not be able to get a contractor probably into late August to September to even contemplate removal. He told me, this conservative, he said, "If everything goes well, and with the disposal, with the remediation, because they're going to do a grinding operation, they are not going to use chemicals to remove the mastic, they're going to use a grinding operation, uh, they have a lot of HEPA filters and all kinds of stuff that they have to, um, put in place, obviously, we cannot occupy the building during this, um, abatement, that probably by mid-November, we could, um, have access to the building back. When we get access back to the building, we will have to have the cleaning crew from Quab and obviously our plant and facilities department to go into the school and do our summer cleaning." Now, ATC said, "The good thing is that you will not be competing to try to get contractors in the summer, because all the contractors now are heavily busy in schools, because this is our, our unoccupied cycle." So he said, "You will get a better price, because they're going to be done work and they're going to be looking for work," he said, "so you probably are going to luck out in that regard." So I'm going to ask Cheryl to, to walk through, um, some of the procurement processes. The thing that I think is really important, and I talked with Trish today and so forth, and I, and I say this to school committee, we are going to be asking that no, no communication about this process goes out except from central office here with the permission of the selectmen in Ocam, so that we all have the appropriate information, because people make up stuff. People have seen me today with such fantasies, um, that I just sit here and go, "Okay, you guys better get on a love boat, because that's, go to that island where they just make up stuff." Because there, there's so many stories around, and, um, we, we need to kind of control information and say, "This is what's happening, this is when the school would be closed, do we, we have plenty of room to move students." That's one good thing. We can, you know, set, uh, some students, uh, you know, move our Ocam kids over to New Braintree. You know, we, we can do some things so that we can continue with school with no problems, and then just move. We can decide to move during, um, you know, November, we can say, "Let's move during Christmas Vacation." We can say, "Let's, let's stay moved for the remainder of the year." We've had conversations with the Department of Education who told me, "So you're just fixing this, and then you're moving kids back? Yes. Here's all you have to do." They sent me the one-page form, which will, we don't have to, what they call, "Recode Students." They will remain the same SACID number, which is a student identification number, they will be considered Ocam students. We're not going to, you know, play a bait and switch. There are those among you, probably in this room, who's like, "You know what Marshall's doing? She's making all this stuff up so she can close a school." I will say this again, for the 150th time, Maureen Marshall cannot close a school. This committee cannot close a school. Read the regional agreement. The only individuals who can close the school is the Assembly at Town Meeting. Please understand that. I think we, somebody said, Bill Hanson got up and said that at Hubbardston the other night. Um, so if this were my coup, to close a school is dumb, because it's not going to accomplish anything. Trust me, 46 years ago, I didn't say, "You know what? Let's get those asbestos tiles, and, and come 2017, we'll be able to close that school." Come on, people, get real. Um, so I, I know that there's lots of people who have had that fantasy. Please, dispel that rumor. 12 months from now, I will not be your superintendent. It does not behoove me in any way to have a school closed. Not, not at all. So please understand that our job is just to assist in this abatement. Uh, we have abated asbestos before, it's an ugly, ugly job, and your kids cannot be in that school. They cannot. People believe. Just tape up the door and put them in there. You can't. So Cheryl, you want to walk us through the procurement, and then we'll go from there?
I'll do the best I can. I'll, I'll get lights for you. When I put this schedule together today, it made sense to me, but I hope it makes sense as I speak of it. Um, up on the top part of this right through here, this section here is, you know, you can tell me now, so...
Oh, no, I have, I thought that was...
I can send it, I can send it to the printer now.
Send it to the printer, maybe it's about 50 copies, and I'll...
Give me a second.
Hey, guys.
How are you?
All right.
Good to see you.
Good to talk to you all.
Wow.
Yeah.
Hey, why don't you go have fun?
Okay, so we'll wait until the handouts are available so that you can see what I'm talking about.
What do you think, if we take a break in the school community, do the task force, and come back to the school community and finish this on?
Uh, well, how much more do we have to do?
Well, we got this, and then we got that request from Barry about the budget.
Yes.
Well, it's up to you, it's just a thought I had since we've had those people here.
Right, my fear is that, uh, half the members might just say, "Yeah, we don't want to be here for the task force." That's what's kind of... Well, not really. I've got something, something else considering myself, but I'll stay for this one, because we have another one Monday.
What's Monday?
Monday's another task force meeting, same thing, except Monica's meeting here.
Well, what's fucking do?
Well, that's what I mean, so it's sort of like, you know, which one do you want to come to, if you want to come involved in this one? I mean...
Okay, well, I...
Yeah, no, that, no, it's, it's a good suggestion, but I'm afraid we may lose some members.
That's right.
All right, let's refocus. Cheryl?
Okay, so there are three different procurement statutes, statutes that this project may fall under. It all depends on what the level of the cost of the project in total will be, and also what the cost of the estimated design services may be. We will need to have a firm such as ATC to create the asbestos abatement design, to tell the contractor what to do. If that cost is less than $10,000, and the estimated project cost, right here, is less than $100,000, then you follow Mass. General Law, Chapter 7, Section 44 through 57. If both, the cost of the design and the project are greater than $100,000, which it may not be, and as we look at some details, you would follow a separate section. And then, if it's a project over 100, over $50,000 through $150,000, you follow Mass. General Law, 149, which then tells you to go to Chapter 30, Section 39m. So there's a lot of different things that may come into play. From, the information on here comes from either the statutes, or from me talking to a business, a plant facilities director in Tantascwa who went through a similar project, or Maureen's discussion with ATC rep today. So, um, we believe that the cost of the design will be less than $10,000, so that we will not have to follow this, this middle section here, which means we don't have to have a request for proposal that takes time to write, and time to advertise, and time to review and award to come up with a design contractor, similar to ATC. So we could just say, "ATC, give us a quote, let's get moving on this project." Um, looking at the project itself, we will have to follow Mass. General Law, one, Chapter 149, and Chapter 30, Section 39m, which is an invitation for bid. It takes some time to write an invitation for bid, maybe two to three days, now I kind of learned that Claire and I will be doing that for the town, so, um, June and July's pretty hectic around here, might take us a little longer. We need to advertise that for two weeks prior to the deadline for the bids to come in, in the central register, in local newspapers, and in combines, and then post it within our jurisdictions one week prior to the opening. It will take some time for a group to get together, to analyze the bids that come in, and make a decision as to which contractor would be awarded the bid. We also have to put, put into a timeline in that bid document as to when we would like this proj, uh, project started, and when we would like it finished. Of course, that will determine whether or not we get bids. Talking with my counterpart over in Tantascwa, uh, he believes that it may only take a, a little while to get these things, the design project done. He believes that when ATC did, yes...
Just wanted to add one thing to your timeline, like this work. Um, there's actually a mandatory two-week, um, Department of Labor notification period, that's even before you can start the facility asbestos removal, that's required for all non-emergency asbestos projects, which is what this would be, so this is another two-week period that should be in there as well.
Um, I didn't find that anywhere, so thank you, Dan. When ATC did the project in Tantascwa, which is, which was a 7,000-square-foot project, it took them between one and three days to come up with the design project and write the specifications that you would work into your invitation for bid, so there's a little more adding to the timeline. This would be a prevailing wage job. This is a OSHA-trained job, which all adds to the cost of the project. There would be a bid deposit required, which is no big deal, but there is a 50% payment bond. That's additional insurance, which must be carried by the vendor. Generally, they pass those costs on to the district or the town. And a pre-bid conference may take us some time, if it is determined by the town and the district that we should have all of the vendors come, see the site before they put in a bid, to make sure you get the most comprehensive bid that you can get. So that's kind of looking over what the laws are and what the timelines are. The project areas, I've noted them as A, B, and C, is in the kitchen, in the cafeteria, and in the hallways. Uh, talking with the Tantascwa person, um, it takes about three to five days to put up contain the area, put up that, that cocoon, and it could take up to, um, two weeks, I don't know if it's $6,700, $6,700 is right there. It could take up to two weeks to do a project of this size, which is about 5,500 square feet. I think I took away my, my column heading over there. The estimated costs of this project are coming from speaking with ATC, we have quotes from two vendors that do abatements, and talking with, um, companies that would actually put in the floor replacement. So I have the different costs here. We believe that the, the design part of this project would cost somewhere between $1,000 and $2,000. We believe the, we have two quotes on abatement that were broken down by sections, so you can see that the kitchen, one quote was $6,700, one was $11,000. In the cafeteria, one quote came in at $14,000, the other $18,500. And in the hallways, the first quote was $11,500, and the second was $12,000. The floor replacement, we have quotes from companies that do floor replacement, the kitchen, a little over $10,000, cafeteria, close to $14,000, and the hallway, about $7,500. In addition to that, you have to have, uh, an air quality control during the time of the project. Companies like ATC do this, they, they measure air quality throughout the project timeline. And we, I got this quote based on what was quoted to Tantascwa, that when they did their 7,000-square-foot project, it was $625 a day. So when I try to put the numbers together, based on the time periods up here, the total cost of the project for the design and air quality could range between $6,000 and $10,000. The abatement itself could range between $32,000 and $40,000. The abatement itself could range between $32,000 and $40,000, and the floor replacement somewhere around $30,000. So, the project in total could run between $70,000 and hopefully $83,000, $85,000. If it goes above that $150,000, which it doesn't look like, we have to do a whole new process. Yes?
Oh, sorry. Should your first column heading say EDF less than $10,000 or EPC less than $50,000?
No, I believe it's $100,000.
I think it's $50,000. Because then you're going to just stay in that column and write $83,000 or something. So, I think that that's $50,000. Which is why it pushes us, your third column is $50,000, $150,000, and that's where that would be. So, you've got zero to $50,000 there.
No, no, because design services have one threshold.
Yep.
Less than $10,000, or less than $100,000, or above $10,000 and above $100,000. The third column is for the project cost, the abatement and the floor replacement. So, design and then the project are two different thresholds.
Okay, I think I get it, I think I'm just confused by that.
Yeah, that's why I put it on a separate line, I'm sorry. The one thing that is, will be helpful in this type of project because Chapter 149 says that you do not have to set a timeline to award a bid. So, if the town were to appropriate, say, $100,000 for this project, and it came in at $102,000, and you would have to award a bid, you wouldn't be able to award a bid. You would have to say no to everything, go back to the town to appropriate once again, which generally will take a town meeting. In this case, following Chapter 149, you don't have a timeline to award a bid. So, if they all came in higher than what was appropriated, you could say, "We're not awarding at this time." Go back to the town, see if they would appropriate more money, and then we could award, or the town could say, "No, this is our total, this is as far as we're going to go," and then we would have to go out to bid again. So, I know that people would like to have like some solid numbers to talk about here, but until we actually go through the process, it's really hard to see how much it will cost before we go to that design phase and have the experts come in and tell us what has to be done.
Cheryl, an IFB, no discussions, bidder who meets all our requirements and is the low bidder, that's who gets the award.
That's who gets the award, and an IFB responsible bidder. So, if they're a responsible bidder, which means that there's no lawsuits against them, those types of things, and they meet all of our requirements, whoever the lowest bidder is, they get the bid.
Good.
It's not like an architect or a designer. If you do an RFP with a designer, this is over those thresholds, you could say, "Okay, we have criteria that we are going to go through and make sure we have discretion as to whether we want to go with one designer or another." But an IFB process, you cannot do that.
Correct.
Any other questions?
The IFB, does that include like a request of qualifications, is that part of it?
Yes, that's part of it, but we don't believe we'll have to go. When we talked to ATC today, they said, "No, that's part of the project, most likely will not go over $10,000." And it has to be $10,000 and the project cost over $100 in order to use the RFP process. So, it's better for us that we can use this practice.
I was saying RFP, but yeah.
Yeah, RFP and RQ, they all, you generally have a qualifications part in the RFP.
Yeah, all right.
Yes.
Questions, any other questions?
Do all three projects have to be done right away from the report? I did not read the report in as much detail.
The report indicates that certainly the kitchen and the cafeteria are in a worse shape, but obviously their recommendation is that we address and to adjacent all the hallways that are located in small jobs, because we're only just putting off the inevitable, which is doing this again in two or three years when those particular four tiles that are forty, which is years old, I understand, are going to be in the same or worse condition than they are now, and they're going to tell us and our next inspection, do it now. So, not to do it now is really, I think, a big thing, was a problem for me. Not going to take any extra time, it's going to cost us a little more money, but getting rid of it all at once is probably in our best interest.
So, to answer the question, only the cafeteria and the kitchen fail. But as Dr. Marshall says, the select board agrees that we want to be, if we're going in there to do the bulk of it, we'll do it all, we'll do it all. So, hopefully if everything goes smoothly, we'll remediate all of the floors.
The same company had done the inspections all along, throughout the years, and then because of the dishwasher problem, that's...
Well, that certainly, it has been a constant, every three years we hear, "Oh, it's getting worse, be careful." And we've done some isolation stuff with extra waxing and that kind of thing. But once that dishwasher failed and the water damage, and obviously the inspection, because it's just getting worse and worse, and they kept telling us for the last probably nine years, probably three years, "You know, you've got to take care of this." Their last letter is not, "You know, you've got to take care of it," it is, "You've got to take care of this." So, it's improvement, it's not to take care of it.
What else?
So, the situation as it exists from our perspective is, we need to work with the selectmen and our budget finance committees. Their town meeting is on the 20th of June. I'm hoping that I discipline the transfer to stabilization of the existing plot. That will give us an appropriation to move forward on the project, so we won't be able to start this time clock until after the 20th of June. We have had outreach to ATC and so forth. On June 13th, we hope to have a parent community meeting. ATC, the asbestos identify some people will be there, talk this through with the public, and have conversations and answer questions and so forth. Steve and I will sort of work as putting comments on websites, ours and the select board, so that people can go and say, "What's really happening? I heard you're doing X, I heard you're going to do Y." That information will say, "The only place you can get accurate information is on these two websites." Because the rumors will abound. Are we going to have to decide to do something with the students for a period of time? Yes. That decision, and you have a veto agreement in front of you, obviously, the decision about what to do, there has to be hearing with the selectmen, with the other hearing, and only after that hearing and conversation so that everybody would know what's happening. Then the school committee will write two-thirds vote, say, "Okay, we're going to move students for a period of time in order to, you know, have this abatement and new floor complete." This is not in any way an attempt by myself or anybody on the street to close Okam Center School. Okam Center School had a youth project where they had eliminated a fire retired flyworm. They had to move their fourth, fifth, and sixth grade to Barry Elementary. Cheryl, you probably remember, put your hand up and voted for that. They moved those grades to Barry Elementary. They were there for probably four or five months. When the project was done, those teachers and students moved back to Okam and the, obviously, the school has a meeting for me since then. So, please understand that there will be, I'm guessing, lots of rumors, and the hope that we have is to get this project on the road and done. One thing people say, "Well, you know, why isn't it just a way to start a school?" Well, that sounds like a great idea, it's what's next June. And you just can't delay the start of Okam because of the busing. The busing is, okay, they're going to bring the Okam and the ready-to-do kids to the high school, and then it's supposed to be the second run. Well, they'd say, "Well, go through the second run, we'll let them start back." Well, trust me, they're not going to start, you know, doing a second run when everybody else is out of school for the rest of June, depending obviously on, no need to have, you know, be practical. So, ensuring that we have a place to put students during this process and the capacity to return them to Okam at the discretion of the select board, we can do. We just have to plan for it, because logistically, what buildings are we cleaning, what classrooms are we filling, and so forth. There's no question that we will have to move special education programs, and we expect that that will be part and parcel of this move. They have to be moved, and we will move them in order to make room for Okam students that might have to be shifted around. So, please understand that the students will have to be displaced in order for us to get this abatement done in the most expeditious fashion. So, that's where we are, and you can see that there's lots of, you know, ice and water keys to cross. I hope that we continue to have an open and reasonable relationship with the selectmen and the budget finance committees and working together, keeping each other informed with all what we're doing, and parents informed, the community informed, we'll get this job.
Are there any more questions on this?
Maureen, sorry about that. Have you explored all of the avenues to repay the students at Okam? Instead of shifting them around?
ATC says, and I have the students touring the abatement on site. And the abatement, obviously, is probably going to be, say, four weeks of testing and setting up and all of that. So, the problem is, do we, I don't want to start school and then move them out in the, you know...
So, you're thinking all of the students out of Okam?
Yeah, I'm taking all of them.
Period?
I would move the students out of Okam for the beginning of the school year, depending on the schedule. Move the Okam students to Ranger. Move the special education programs into Barry where we have room. And then, that will empty Okam, you know, through the abatement and so on and so forth. The special education programs may, well, portions of them stay in Barry, depending on what we're going to do with special education. You know, we get, we have a college center, we have a conversation about where our special education programs are located. So, we'll look at that and make, obviously, decisions based upon what's best for kids at that time. Moving the special education students during the course of the year may not be anything we do, but we certainly will have Okam students bracket Okam if that's what Okam decides to do. They have the decision-making process. If you look in the agreement, basically, we'll have parent meetings and community hearings with the selectmen running those, and subsequently to that, the school committee by two-thirds vote can say, "We're moving them back, we're keeping them here," whatever. The regional agreement has, provides great latitude for this year. But yeah, we're going to have to move them while we abate.
So, will the preschool come back?
I...
Only because New Ranger will look very barren if they only have two classes after that.
Whether the preschool will come back during that year and I move them back or what? It is my fantasy, and don't get, we're on screen from the room. But my fantasy is there shouldn't be preschool in every one of our schools. And I don't think there's any.
But there isn't, so I'm just curious what's going to happen.
Well, there isn't, but I would tell you, if you...
I mean, I think we should increase our...
Well, I agree. We agree. That is certainly, research and evidence would say that is a good place to put somebody. So, whether or not, I would vote yes, the answer would be yes. But if there's only two preschools, whether both of them would come back, that's a question. One of them probably should be certainly in Barry. We have some needy populations. We should try very hard to put preschool in our school. And that would be our objective, which we work to do. But obviously, you know, we would look at...
Because preschool's never been in Barry, correct?
I don't, we have...
It was always in Harwood or Okam or...
Okam, yeah, years ago.
I don't think we've had one in Public Stand ever, and I don't know if we've ever had one that they have. I can't, I don't think so.
So, you're not saying, yes, it will come back or not?
I won't, because obviously what we have to do is evaluate the situation when we get there.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a series of questions. Has there been an air quality testing, ATC directly?
ATC will do an air quality test. I know with bad air quality, Charlie had one. I think the question is, should we have one now and maybe keep talking about moving kids?
That was my next question, should we?
I can tell, they're not in that climate. You know, at the moment, no. You know, the cafeteria, what they're doing, it's going to be... What I can do is discuss this with ATC and have an answer for that. I guess we'll be there on Tuesday night, would be a good question to ask, I guess.
Okay, because I guess the question is, somebody asked me...
Should we move now?
Should we move them now?
Yeah, yeah. I think that that's a question certainly for the hygienist.
Also, town meeting is normally in the cafeteria. Should we move that to the gym?
Well, it's been in the gym both...
Oh, it's been in the gym?
Yeah, hasn't it, on the cafeteria? Last year it was, is that here?
Will it hurt the gym floor?
No, the gym floor is composite, it's not...
Claire?
We could, if we're concerned about chairs on that cafeteria square, we could take and cover it, tape it down, so that we don't break down anything, we can seal it off.
Right, encapsulate.
Yeah.
And will it be laid out if we move the kids to the breakers? No.
Not at all. The thing of this, it's going to take the cooperation of the community and the selectmen of the school district and everything to just pull this off and make it as seamless as possible. And the people who will be the most resilient, the sanest of all, will be the...
Who are the kids, right?
It will be an adventure for them, it really will. It will be an adventure, and especially if, as adults, we treat it as an adventure, it's an adventure.
Any other questions? Steve?
You said Tuesday representatives? Who's coming?
ATC representatives.
Where are they coming?
They're coming to the Okam Central School. We have a date. George and I talked about dates and we thought that the 13th is, I think that's a parent-teacher night. And we wanted to just get as much information, you know, to the parents as soon as we could, because before you know it, we're out of school. And once we're out of school, we sort of lose touch with the parents, and we'd really like to have them understand what we're doing and how we're trying to... And for them to say, "The 20th is an important night for them." Make sure we transfer that money from stabilization.
Are you going to have like a meeting with the parents?
Yes, give me information.
What time is it?
It's going to be at 6:00 p.m.
Would you like me to send something out?
I would, and that will help Jess. If you can, by email, as well as probably a one-call. The best way to get and so forth. That, I know, does not necessarily get to our community, it will get to parents, but if there's a better ways to do it, do you have, do you have the first 911 or anything? So, I mean, we can certainly, you know, our parents will maybe top it up in our selectmen and so forth, so hopefully, I hope we get a good turnout so people can get the accurate information. And so, I hope at that point, we may be able to have some sort of a timeline. This is what, this is where the goal is. This is when, you know, we're going to do this part of it. Then these three weeks, we do this, and then these two weeks, the Department of Labor does that, and so forth. And then, once we get a contractor, if there was only the contractor is...
Yeah, I guess I will.
What will ATC, they told me, you'll get nobody in the summer, everybody's booked. But you'll get a better price, because everybody's been working for work come September, October, so that's good.
Other questions, comments, yes ma'am?
I live on the park beach, I heard you saying you can move the special programs, but would that be to begin summer school, would that be to begin next?
That's going to have to be a conversation between plant facilities and you guys, and because you really provide us with the challenge, because you're in the building in the summer, there's some people in the building over at Rubble's Lane, trying to clean, because we're going to have to do a different cleaning schedule that will be a little challenging in order to get everything ready, because we're going to have to, it's just going to be different. We don't have to clean the Okam, but we have to move a lot of teaching. And that's challenging.
And if you were saying that if we're going to start working until the end of August, then, I just wasn't...
Well, we have to make sure that they're safe there. You'll use the cafeteria and the kitchen, the newsroom, and the stuff, so that helps. You could put that on...
Other questions, is that it?
Is there any added expenses to moving programs to...
The added expenses primarily are going to be, there's a thing in the teacher contract that provides a portion of the day's pay for teachers to move if we had them move when it is not during the workday. I would suspect that we may be able to use the, you know, we have 180, we may be able to use a day and provide Okam with help and assistance from plant facilities, but that will be an added, that's no question. We, you know, have any teachers for the move, because they don't have to do a day when it's not workdays to do the move. Plant facilities, I don't know if we'll have more overtime as a result. I know we've had preliminary conversations about what that cleaning schedule will look like. That could be a situation. Certainly, at Barry, we may have to have some additional time in order to collect fees from preschoolers, because that does take, you know, a lot of time that right now don't do. So, some of the money that we had for the placement of junior retirement, we'll use it at Rubble's Lane for the period of time we need to do the actual work there. We are going to probably seek, so we have some money in a grant that would allow us opportunities for school psychologists type, and so, we probably will have administrative assistance school psychologists who will be available at Rubble's Lane to help with assistance in that program. That's, you know, part of a great program that is just giving us additional personnel. and use there during this transition. So there will be, I know this would be extra cost for some, but when we are with the bus company, we say, "Okay, now you're not going to do the split run." I think it will probably be easier if you bring them to one spot than what you do now. You know, but it's better than anything. I think we'll be okay with transportation?
There'll be added cost for those three buses for OKAM to come over.
Oh, okay. So that's something we'll have to talk with Joan Mafy about and see if that is maybe... You know, I don't know, with the contract, Cheryl certainly knows, but we'll see if that's an additional of the, if it is, I can't believe it will be too severe. I think it's an addition of 20% change to the route, and I don't think that will be... So, yeah, there will be some, but only with the planning, we have a choice.
Bless you.
We have to, we have to, you know, discuss this out in that case, really, not to be...
Steve?
Yeah, I just have one comment to close. I'd like to express my appreciation to Dr. Marshall and all of the consultants, the assistants, the, he was just a take the work we see tonight, a spreadsheet, you know, this is clearly outside of our expertise over at OKAM. We will be relying heavily on the expertise up here. I just felt that, express my appreciation. More to closing, Cheryl, as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so can we get the lights on, this off? We still have one more item.
We have one more, Gary.
Was it the IP? Oh.
Okay.
All right.
So the last item for the full committee meeting is a budget update, and Maureen, you want to handle that?
Yeah, we had the opportunity to meet with some selectmen and officials from the town of Hardwick, from the town of OKAM, from the town of Barry. Last, was it just last night?
Last night.
I guess, I lose track of where I am every night. In Barry last night, we had, I think, a really rich and interesting discussion about issues of concern budget-wise. And what I would like to recommend to the committee, that the budget subcommittee and the plant and facilities subcommittee convene as soon as practicable in order to discuss possibilities of budget reductions in the capital areas in order to assist the member towns in assessments. Obviously, the stress and strain of our economy and so on is felt by all, and so we want to have the opportunity to have that conversation. And Mark, if that would be amenable to you, I believe it would be amenable to Mr. Kelly, maybe if we could put together a meeting time early in the week. And then, I know you don't want to hear this, but I would really, if we are able to come to some adjustment or a conclusion, I would really enjoy if the committee would convene a meeting on the 14th or the 15th in order to prepare new assessments, if possible, for our meeting on the 17th in Hardwick, which is going to be 8:30 a.m. on Saturday, new time. I like it better than 1 o'clock, Cheryl.
We might want to double those meetings, because we're already out Monday night and Tuesday.
Oh, well, I guess I don't have any more nights. Okay.
All right. You're out Monday and Tuesday already?
Yeah, so we'll double them up on Wednesday. We'll do budget subcommittee, whatever. Yeah, if the committee could meet on the 14th, we could start perhaps budget subcommittee and plant facilities subcommittee as early as 5:30 and start a 7 o'clock meeting with the full committee, because the full committee will have to be there. If there is any changes, it's a two-thirds vote with the full committee.
Mark, can you do that? When do that?
Yes. Can we? 5:30? And I'll talk with Mr. Kelly.
And full committee at 7?
And the full committee at 7?
On the 14th?
The 14th, Wednesday.
Flag day.
Everybody's here, and I will not be there.
Well, I have to do an agenda.
Okay.
I'll remind her. I have to do an agenda tomorrow.
Lucky you.
Are we good?
We're good.
Any discussion on that meeting? Are we good on that item?
The full committee meeting will start at 7? Yeah. Budget and the plant and facilities together, because plant and facilities has to be involved in that conversation. Right, Cheryl?
I think so.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the full committee meeting?
Oh, who?